The Council of the 13th of September 2023. councillor Mike Isherwood in the chair, standing in for the mayor. So apologies, you've got the apprentice this evening. But we'll make a start. Item one is the public participation session, where members of the public have an opportunity to make representations on matters on the agenda or of public interest. So I can see we have quite a few people from the town in tonight. So would anyone like to ask questions or read out a statement? Yes, thank you. Is there a spare microphone?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
What I'd like to say is we live on Clamford Rise and around about six weeks ago, we had all these notices put up on all our lampposts from Freedom Fiber, who we since discovered on looking up wish to install some tall poles to deliver high speed broadband above ground. I don't believe it's just limited to Clamford Rise either. I think quite a few streets around us and the whole area, it does not have any poles. We've got all our services provided underground, including, I believe, open reach have already laid high speed broadband cables under the pavement. So we really don't want these poles. And the question is really, what can we do about it?
Okay, thank you. Yes. Have we had correspondence on this matter? Yes, I have been meaning to get back to you. So I will, I'll try and remember to send you an email tomorrow. I have had contact with a member of the planning department at Shropshire Council. And from memory, they don't officially need planning permission to do infrastructure work of this sort. So I'm awaiting further advice on that. So I'll chase that up for you tomorrow. Oh, have you? Great. Yeah, or you will. You have as well. Please do, councillor Kerr.
All right, okay. Yes, unfortunately, the planning authority, which the Shropshire Council doesn't have control over poles of this height, which you suspected that when you raised this with me. I've had that confirmed by Phil Molyneux, who is the head of planning services. I think that's very unfortunate. And I think lots of communities across the country are threatened with these sorts of infrastructure and want to be able to have their voice heard. So I'm going to recommend if we can suspend standing orders to just make a motion to invite, I think, to the government to say that there is concern in the communities that there is no effective a local democracy that haven't say over this infrastructure and there should be in future. So if that's permissible, I'm looking at the target. I'm asking for the suspension of standing orders so we can make that very simple motion and then we can proceed.
Yeah, you need a second and obviously you need to.
But it's.
Excellent. It's within standing orders that gives you the last permission to do this.
So first things first, you need to propose a suspension of standing orders to.
Propose suspension of standing orders, technical business.
I'll second. All in favour of suspending standing orders? Thank you. Anyone against? Oh, sorry. Councillor Jones against? Councillor Davis against? Any abstentions? No, okay. If you'd like to just make your motion then.
I'll do it quickly. I mean, I think this is an issue which has been brought to my attention by you. Thank you for doing that, but I'm aware of it anyway. And I just think local communities want to have a say over infrastructure that's being put outside their doors in their own area. And it's not they want to necessarily ban it all, they just want to say they want to have a process whereby it can be properly scrutinised, locations can be determined, visual impact can be minimised. And there isn't such a process at the moment. And I think we should be writing to the government, the minister presumably for planning and local government, to say that local communities should have this opportunity so the planning process should apply. I don't see any reason why these private companies should be able to apply the plethora. Because there's no limit, is there? You've just saved, what have you got underground? You know, how, when does it stop? And there are no limits on it. So that's my motion to be right to the minister, raising our concern over this.
Is there a second? Councillor Upton, thank you. We'll have to allow discussion. Does anyone have anything else to say before that goes to the vote? Councillor Jones. Could you pop your microphone on? Sorry councillor.
I just hope some of those who want to object have got broadband to do that. I mean, these people are trying to, broadband is one of the things that we are very short of in our rural communities. And it is, I think it is one of the things that's stopping us being a better community. And I think the more broadband we have at the moment, the better. So I'm quite in favour of trying to get more broadband into the rural areas. And even, I mean, if you go down towards Suesby, there's no broadband, there's no broadband and there's no form coverage down there either. So I think more than we have, the better.
Any other? I'm sorry, I probably can't let you in now that it's become a motion being discussed by council. I do apologise. Any other councillors with any comments or questions? Yeah, unless the second wants to come in. Sorry, it was Jonathan, yeah. You were going to and then you didn't. Thank you.
There were councillor Jones's comment. I mean, this isn't saying there can't ever be any new infrastructure. It just says the planning process, it'd be like saying people need housing, therefore we shouldn't have any planning controls over housing, but we do. And we have planning controls over businesses and we have planning controls over extensions. So if it's going to have an impact on communities and impact on the environment, then it should be a proper process to determine it. And that's all it's been asked for. It's not to say it shouldn't happen, it might happen, but we'll go through a proper process and be properly decided. And that's why I think it should proceed on that basis I propose.
Okay, I'll move to the vote then. All in favour of writing to the. Thank you. Stating that we believe there should be local consultation and democratic accountability over the installation of planning controls over the installation of infrastructure within communities. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you very much councillors. Okay, we'll return to normal business. Is there anyone else in the public gallery who would like to? Whoever that is? I'm afraid you have to be in the room. Anyone at all? No? No, hands up Darren? No, nothing? We're in public participation, so if you'd like to speak, thank you.
This is Operation Martin's Garden. Following the Martin's Law and the CARE gap, following the Manchester Arena attack, Martin's Law will require organisations to prepare by planning, training and supplying the right equipment for members of the public to use in emergency. When the CARE pack could be the thing that kills, the CARE gap is a time between an injury occurs and the arrival of an ambulance. In the near future, the new legislation will see businesses that operate public based places, places of worship, indoor markets, supermarkets, nightclubs and large museums, as well as a large gathering of people such as Red Square, Baby Head, Town Park. To keep Audrey Street alive, Operation Martin's Garden is where Audrey Town Council could purchase and store packets with their compatible cabinets which show Audrey Town Council is prepared for the worst. Public accessible trauma kits are based on the original Daniel Bard foundation bleed control kits. Pack kits have increased number of medical components inside. There's also space in these backpacks to add other medical equipment. Would you be willing to purchase and install these packets in town?
Well, I can't probably answer that this evening as it would have to be an agenda item. If I just hand over to the clerk just for. There we go. Okay, if there's nobody else who wishes to speak during public session, that's great because we're just within the 15 minutes there. I'll move on to item two. Any apologies for absence? It is. Thank you. I'll move, we accept the apologies. Thank you, all in favour? Thank you. I think that's unanimous. Item two B, disclosure of councillors' interests in any matters in relation to the code of conduct. I'll have to just declare a bias on four B on the cadets, the Osprey Squadron, sorry, 1165 Osprey Squadron RAF AC. My son is a member of those, of that unit, so I'll step outside. And I have asked our former mayor to take over the chairing during that item. And he's kindly agreed.
You will have to, just on that, you will have to obviously vote her in at the time. But that's, that's, that's what you find saying that.
You're quite right, yes. A chair will have to be appointed by council once I've left the room. So I'll just go around from my left. Anybody else with anything to declare? Councillor Maguire?
I won't go for all that. I'll just do what you said for exactly the same reasons.
Thank you. Councillor Upton?
Mr Deputy Mayor, I will be declaring a bias on item four A as the applicant is affiliated to my place of employment, so I will therefore step out of the room for it.
Thank you very much. That's great. So item three, we have the minutes of the meeting of council held on the 12th of July 2023. Report OTC 0323. Councillor Upton? Move we adopt? Thank you. I'll second that. All in favour? Thank you. So councillor Upton is now leaving the room as we move to item four A, which is the grant application from the Orthopaedic Institute Limited Appendix A. They did come in and gave us a nice overview of the, of the application, which is for a piece of equipment that will be vital to the research of a PhD student working at the orthopaedic hospital. It will help with diagnosing and getting the correct treatment for people with rheumatoid arthritis. And yeah, it was fascinating. I'm afraid I can't go into much more detail than that because it was very technical, very medical. But yeah, I would like to hear any questions or comments from the floor? Nothing? Oh, councillor Stackhouse?
Yeah, I thought it was a really interesting grant application. I'm just not sure whether the ones that they should be applying the money for the grant, to be honest.
Okay, okay. Valid opinion. Councillor Coburn?
Yeah, I sort of felt the same. I think they, it's clearly, I hope that they find the money from somewhere. It's clearly a vital project. But they said that it's going to cost them £150 per visit to the other university to use to do the work there, which they're going to have to pay. So they will, in five visits, have made up the money anyway. So I think we would just be subsidising that payment they have to make in a future future instance, given the amount of money they have in their balance already, which was substantial. I think that they will be able to fund it themselves without requiring assistance.
Okay, I see. Anybody else? And is there anyone with a proposal to deal with this item of business? Are two speakers not in favour? But is anyone prepared to make a proposal? Councillor Davis?
Yeah, I agree with the other speakers actually. Orthopaedic do come, or have been to us for money for various other things. And I think there's probably some better projects there that would benefit more than just that personally. So if you need a proposal, I'll propose that we don't accept that grant or however you want to word it.
Thank you councillor Davis. Is there a second for that proposal? Councillor Coburn, I saw first. So if nobody else has anything to say, all in favour of refusing the grant to the Orthopaedic Institute?
Just require to, so I'll obviously have to give feedback. That's because of the significant financial.
Gardens and facilities there, I think we're happy to have done that. But I think medical research just seems to be a bit of a stretch too far in terms of this local connection. But that's a factor for me, it may not be a factor for others, I don't know, that was in my mind.
Chair to find a chair.
Got a chair to find a chair, Murray, yeah. Do things in the right order, haven't we? Okay, so for item four B, I nominate councillor Moore to chair that item while I leave the room. Councillor Upton's seconding, all in favour? Any against? Abstentions? I'll hand over to councillor Moore then, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Move the correct part over, so I can remember how to do this. Do we need to do it again? Have we done something wrong? Have we done something wrong? Will we cancel again? Okay. Shall we go through the elect? No, all right, okay, cool. All right, okay, okay. So on to item four B, a grant application from Austria 1165 RAF AC. RAF AC fosters the spirit of adventure developing. He's just left me half of a thing here to look at. Let me look at the whole thing. Do you have, Aaron, do you have the thing? C supplement for £995.15. So yeah, has anybody got anything they'd like to say? Councillor Jones?
Yeah, they're an excellent organisation. They support Audrey Town Council on Remembrance Day as well. And you know, I've never actually been there, but I see in the newspaper the good work they do for the children and the youth of this town. And I know they're always got a full section of people who want to join there. And I think a lot of them do go on to join the forces and do a good job for our country. So I'm happy to support this.
Thank you councillor, any other comments? Councillor Davis?
Yeah, I agree with councillor Jones's comments. After listening to the guy talking about it, I was a little bit dubious at first. But there's obviously, the staff will do the training as well for the cadets. And the cadets are available for functions that we have in the park and various things. And they said they are available once they're trained to be able to deploy the equipment if needed. So I think that's a good thing for the town and I fully support it.
Anybody else saying comments? Councillor Coburn?
Yes, I think I was impressed particularly with the emphasis on training more than just getting some more equipment into town. That, you know, you're getting people who are able to use this and the information will get disseminated outwards. And I think that is a very useful thing and I fully support it. And I'm happy to second councillor Jones if that hasn't already been done by councillor Dave.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, yeah, Austria 1165 are a fantastic organisation. As councillor Jones rightly said, they do support the town in a lot of, a lot of ways with not just Remembrance Day, but as far as youth provision and stuff in the town, what they, what they provide on a weekly basis there for many years is exemplary. And they're a real credit to the town, absolutely. So with that said, if I could just open that to the vote. So all in favour of supporting the application for Austria 1165? And that is unanimous. Thank you councillors. I will hand back over to the chair.
I think I'm trying to move just like heart of the words. It's like a spirit of adventure. Wait, there's no.
Sorry about that, yeah, because I'm trying to, yeah. Right, thanks everyone. Thank you, thank you councillor Moore. Moving on, we have item four C, discussion and decision, a request for financial support from Heather Burnley for the Henry Walford Davis, what do we call it, a bass relief? Were those the words used? Sorry, I'll have to find the. Yes. Okay. For the benefit of the tape, as it were, Heather designed a bass relief of the composer Henry Walford Davis, which is situated on the wall of Christchurch. It has become discoloured over the last 10 years of being in place. She and another person did try and clean it, which was unsuccessful. They're arranging to have it cleaned professionally, which would be £400. And she's asking if we would care to contribute now. Should it go through the grants and donations? But they're not an organisation, so it's a little bit tricky really, isn't it? So it's open for debate really, whether or not, and if so, how much? Councillor Kerr?
It's up to propose £200, but you're saying there's already been done. So that's a bit odd, isn't it? It can be found something that's already happened.
It's a contribution, isn't it?
Okay. A bit odd that I'm still proposing that we have, of course, it's a clear history of Osprey. It's quite an impressive site, it's quite a nice bass relief, I think, as it came out on the car park there. So yeah, I propose to propose £200.
Councillor Jones? I'll second that. Thank you. There's probably no need to stretch this one out. I'll move to the vote if no one's got anything. All in favour? That is unanimous? Thank you very much councillors, okay. Then it's for D, for noting, Osprey Sports Forum have provided an update, which is there in the paperwork. Just for noting, does anyone have any comments to make? I'll move, we note then, all in favour? Sorry, sorry councillor Jones.
Yeah, it was, it was me who initially got in touch with them and with Aaron's help, we managed to, and the council's help, we've given them a donation every year. But I don't know whether we ever tightened the rules up because we did have a little problem when someone came to us to ask for money that we, they weren't directed to sports council first. Have we managed to do that during, with the audit committee to tighten our rules up?
Mr Deputy Mayor?
So this notice of motion came to pass after speaking with Mr Darren Fraser, who happens to be here this evening. Mr Fraser is actually responsible for bringing the bleed kits to Osprey. He's the person who came to us and recommended that those all be put in. And since those bleed kits have been put in, Mr Fraser's now come back to me again and suggested that after several reports nationally, that the bleed kits are not necessarily being used to their full potential. So because of, because of that, I think it highlights a really sensible point, which I thank you for raising. And we really need to basically ensure, start having a look at training to use these. It's all well and good us putting these bleed kits in as a nice tick box exercise, but without instructions on how to use them properly, it's more of a vanity project rather than something that's actually valuable to the town. So therefore I propose we provide training and some opportunities, some basic awareness campaigns around them. Cost will be dependent on whether the kits were supplied by Safeguard Medical, who provide free training, or via Turtle, who charge. And I believe the clerks had a look into some of that, haven't you? The examples within the West Midlands are both the fire service and the community first responders providing the training responsible. And I've spoken to Michelle Simmons from the community first responders as well. And they're keen to work alongside us to help provide some of that training. As I know, Mr Fraser is through his connections as well. So I request that the council allows the police partnership panel and youth services panel to discuss and implement these programmes using the available budget allocated. Should additional funds be required, then we will return to the council at the earliest opportunity for discussion. But preferably, we can decide now to allocate a small budget, should it be required. We can also publish instructional videos from control at bleed.org to our social media and provide information, stickers, boards near our defib boxes as well. And perhaps even a little bit of support from the rest as well, just to get some of this information out into the public. So yeah, with that said, has anybody got any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of points. Not against the principle of thing, like to know numbers and costing. But I believe councillor Moore has a lot to do with schools or teaching. So any organisation like that, I've got first aiders or basic first aiders. So any training, when you read through this to the younger, the 10 to 17 just got on here, 20% of possession with knife. So if the training was done through the schools to the younger people as part of their last year or something at school, I think that would be mostly beneficial. Problem was with training, when do you refresh it? Because you cannot be trained today and two months' time, you forgot about it. The second thing with this, basically, it's abandoned. So, you know, people manage to use defibs very successfully without any training. Okay, it talks to you. But if you've got a major bleed and you're using this, if you're speaking to the 999, they will discuss it and tell you how to fit it anyway. They will go through that with you, they do that with all the calls, whatever the emergency is, and they keep you on the phone. So I'm not against it in principle, but I think we need to, who's going to, well, not who's going to benefit, but, um, you know, there's a lot of people that wouldn't go near an injury like that anyway. Um, you know, if they see blood or somebody poorly, they, they just turn and they can't deal with it. So I think you've got to look at where you're putting this training and, and the costs and the numbers around it.
Thank you. Um, sorry councillors, I didn't, uh, see if there was a second for the motion. First of all, um, does anyone wish to second the motion? Uh, councillor Cassin, I think I saw your hand first. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, thank you for those comments, councillor Davis. And then I've got councillor Price who, who indicated to speak.
Um, my, my concern is, um, it is, it's, it's a, it's a very good subject. It saves lives. My concern is the fact is it's going to have to be a rolling project. Because as people move, they leave the area, they get older, they get jobs. So we need to have this rolling project of training people to have a continuity. Yeah. So we, we, we've got to look at that bigger picture. Um, that's, that's my only worry.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Uh, councillor Coburn?
Uh, I think, um, councillor, I've already submitted with councillor David's point, but I think the last point you made about people, um, not wanting to get involved. I think one of the most valuable things about this training is that it gives people the confidence that yes, he, he might know that the person from on nine 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 will talk them through it. But if you're an average member of the public, you might not know that. Whereas if you have the training and you are going to have that confidence to do that, knowing that you're going to have the support there. Um, and I think that, that is possibly the most beneficial thing that the training can do, as well as creating further awareness about the kits and their limitations.
Thank you. Councillor Jones?
I don't mind blood, as long as it's not my own. Um, so, I mean, do we want to put a figure on what sort of grant we could put towards this? If we're doing this, let's do it properly, isn't it? Do you want to put five hundred in the kitty or what do we, what do you think?
Um, does the proposer have a, have a, an answer to that?
So at the, at the moment, it's going to be very much determined by how far we'd want to try and stretch the, uh, the training out by working with community first responders and with working with Austria eleven sixty five and other cadets and things like that. We can do a lot more in-house that way. But if we're going to start looking at doing training in schools, then it really is a saw how long's a piece of string type thing. So I mean, I maybe suggest that we look at teaching, um, doing some training sessions, perhaps at the marches, uh, if they'd be willing. And then obviously along with, uh, the cadet organisations and, um, the first responders and maybe two hundred and fifty pounds towards each as a starting point. And then obviously, as I mentioned before, there is, um, there is budget in the youth, um, uh, budget available as well to go towards some of the advertising and things along those lines. So, um, yeah, we can look at the most effective way to roll it out with that and then maybe bring it back to council if we decide that further, further is needed. I, I believe the clerk's got a suggestion, so.
You. Yes, yeah, it, it, it's good to have the equipment, but even better to have a training, I thought. So, um, councillor Maguire?
Yeah, I just want to say it's a great idea and thank you to councillor Moore and, uh, Mr Fraser for bringing this to our attention. It is, it is going to be beneficial. But on top of that though, would it be worth, as we now have over twenty-two bleed kits in all the defibs throughout the Austria Town Council, parish councils and the bid, would it be worth a letter being written out to them as well? To get them involved in helping financially towards this venture? Because they have them in their areas as well. So I think they should be helping, um, with the costs as well. So a letter to them to see if they would help with the costs.
Um, so, so, you know. I think it's a reasonable suggestion. Um, so we could, we could, um, build, make that part of the, part of the process that, that, that we go through once, uh, once we've, we've started. Um, is that an amendment or, um, or? councillor Moore?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good idea. It makes perfect sense. Um, no, uh, no objections to, to that at all. Um, just to the, the clerk's point of obviously is we need to ascertain what those costs are first. So I think that rather than muddy the waters at this stage, what we'll do is we'll put a pin in that, if you're happy to do that. Um, and once we've done this first set of training from here, we've got our numbers, then bring that. I don't know if that'll need to come back, uh, again. Um, we can decide that later. Um, but then perhaps we could bring that back together at some point, um, and try and, uh, help spread it out into the, uh, into the parishes and such. Um, but yeah, for right now, I think let's figure out what these costs are local and, and worry about our ones and then, and then try and encourage others to do the same.
Okay. Anybody else with anything to say? No, in that case, all in favour then of, uh, adopting this motion and, uh, the suggestions from the clerk and councillor Maguire. Yes, thank you very much. Uh, any against? Any abstentions? Thank you councillors. Uh, B is a notice of motion in the name of councillor Duncan Kerr. So councillor Kerr?
I intend to say, I think it's, I mean, obvious, I think the motion's needed because we haven't actually got a policy. I think by practice, we've tried to prevent this pets being given as prizes, but we need a policy. And here is a policy. I urge all members to adopt it.
Is there a second? So councillor Maguire's hand go up first. Uh, anyone wish to speak? councillor Upton?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. When I first saw this item on the agenda, I was actually surprised that giving live animals away as pets was still a thing. Given the countless hurdles and hoops you have to jump through to adopt an animal, the fact that any old stranger can walk into a fun fair, shoot some targets or throw some stones at little dots and win a goldfish in a bag is quite absurd and obscene. So I would therefore consider as a progressive council that we consider not just adopting this, but also given that item number four is to review the current policies and licences that we ask our counterparts in Shropshire Council to consider doing likewise within areas of their own jurisdiction if they haven't done so already.
Thank you. Um, the, the clerk just wants to make a comment on this.
Yeah, just, just.
Thank you. Um, I don't think there's anyone else who wishes to speak. It is pretty straightforward. So I'll move to the vote. All in favour? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Uh, so, motion, oh, I've gone past it. Motion C is in my name. And, uh, yeah, before anyone says it, yeah, um, I am aware that there is a newspaper, a newsletter sat on the table out there. Um, I'm referring specifically to a newsletter that would be, um, delivered to every residence in, in, within our parish boundaries. Um, yeah. Straightforward that we, we did approve a report, uh, a couple of years ago that did state that we uh, intended to improve communications and the involvement of residents in the work of the council. And, uh, the first thing on the list was to produce an, an Austria Street Town Council newsletter. Um, and my, my vision for that was always to have it delivered. Um, for one of the important reasons is that, um, a written communication of that type delivered to people's homes is inclusive and accessible. Um, it's all very well having it in certain locations or online. And I know that brilliant progress has been made by officers in improving overall communication from the council, um, to residents. But I think we, we do need to do this. Um, I have been approached several times from members of the public saying, um, you know, they, they, they're not on social media, they missed, uh, they missed the, um, the item in Austria Life magazine, or they don't get it or, or whatever. And I think this would be an ideal way to keep people informed of, uh, the projects and events. And also the meetings, um, to try and encourage engagement with the, um, with the local democratic process. So it would not only be a newsletter, but there would be a piece either inserted or, uh, as I say, a cut out and keep portion, uh, detailing the events, uh, that are on throughout the year and also a calendar of meetings, um, or how to go about accessing online, et cetera. So that's it. Um, would anyone like to, uh, speak on this? Councillor Maguire? Oh, sorry, I do need a second. You're right. That councillor over there. Councillor Froggit, sorry. And councillor Maguire, uh, would like to speak.
Yeah, I read through this. I, I, in principle, I think it's a fair idea. Because at the end of the day, we are trying to be more open and transparent. But the only, the thing is, we, I understand what you're saying with regards to not everybody has, um, the internet and such like, but that's what we spend our money on when it comes to the notice boards, you know, the, um, the community notice boards that we have scattered around the town. So when there are events on, things can be posted there for the town council purposes. We also have the library where people can visit and use their computers and any literature there that's for the council can be put there. So I get what you're saying, but I'm a, I'm a bit concerned on the sheer amount of cost. I mean, we haven't got a costing to this, but I can imagine through what we all know when we're doing leaflets for our own areas, what the, the cost could be just for us to deliver our own leaflet, let alone a stamp to be put on it, let alone the man hours that are involved in producing these leaflets for everybody. So I would be interested before we go forward on this to perhaps have a costing before it's fully implemented so that we are aware. Cause at the end of the day, this is council taxpayers' money we are talking about. Um, and there are other avenues that people could take as, as, as another option that if they haven't got the internet to use, like I said, the library. So, you know, in the commu, in the notice boards that we have pinned up, I mean, we spent not long ago good considerable amount of money on two notice boards within the area. Um, are they used efficiently? Should we be using them more efficiently? If not, why aren't we? You know, all this information that we have to our hands, like in, at the Royal Parish Council, they, they put up, uh, an agenda inside the, the cabinets for residents to read if they need to, if they haven't got the access to the internet. So there's always other ways rather than spending council, council taxpayers' money unnecessarily. You might have, so I mean, Austria's a population of seventeen and a half thousand people. You might only have a hundred people that have no internet.
I think, yeah, I, I, I take your point. I, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, but I've got the clerk who, who just wants to, to come in, if I can just let him do that before going to councillor Price, just in case he's about to answer your question.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll just go to councillor Price first, uh. Oh. Come on.
Right, um, yeah, no, I'm just thinking about this now. Um, getting the information out there is always very difficult, um, in the best ways. But I'm just thinking public transport, most vehicles have screens now. You can get onto your local bus companies, do a deal there, you know, and it, it's a rolling programme, doesn't stop all day. Um, I like the idea of, of getting news out there. I always feel that the bottom end of Austria doesn't know what the top end of Austria is doing. So I do like that. But as long as it's, as long as it's governed and marshalled, it doesn't turn political, that, that's brilliant, you know? And we're just going to keep an eye on that. But I would look at public transport. I would look at the taxis, you know, everything like that. Anything that carries people that ordinarily we probably wouldn't meet with. Yeah, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, yes, please.
There's always other channels we can get news out there. Just, it's important I address the point about political. Just, just absolutely clarity as you raised it.
Uh, I think councillor Jones was next, and I've got councillor Kerr.
Yeah, I'm surprised nobody, they all don't read the adverts to be honest. What a stonking newspaper it is. And of course, the, the Shropshire Store and Eden as well. I mean, there's quite a lot of outlets out there. And then it always surprises me how the greens like to be green and then they want to put a newspaper through everybody's letterbox. So, um, I'm normally keen. I think there's enough outlets there. And the, the young lady in the corner there is doing a fantastic job on our PR now. Which is, we really upped our game on that. I think a lot of people have, most people have got one of these now. Um, unless they haven't, their daughters or their children have got them to know what's going on. I think some people have hit around yet, they still wouldn't know what's going on, to be honest. So, um, I'm not too keen. I think it's costs we could probably do without.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Kerr, are you still wishing to come in?
Yes. Um, it's amazing, isn't it? We ripple over sending something to each household, but every year, every, every year the household receives a bill in the post. We're not happy to send them the bill by post, but we're not happy to tell them what we're doing with their money. Um, aren't we? You know, reality is that is all people see for coming through their letterbox on the town council is every year they receive a bill. I think the idea of just telling people what the town council does at the time ahead, you know, maybe in the spring. So you've got the full summer of events. Means can people actually plan their lives and take account of that? They haven't got to randomly see a bus go by or remember to look at a notice board to see what's going on. They can see all the events of the year. They might actually realise quite the number of events of the year they are. They might plan their lives around that and say, oh yeah, the Bloom Festival. What about that? That's coming up that weekend. We'll get some friends over or do, you know, we use that opportunity. And then if we want to get more people involved in things like the annual town meetings, as we've tied to, there's an opportunity there as well to tell everybody about it. What we're doing, what we're achieving with people's own money, absolutely true, but we owe it to them, having taken their money to tell them what we've done with their money. And the idea of just doing once a year, telling them that, telling them what we're doing, I think is our duty. And in terms of it being green, we make the thing recycle. And in terms of it being green, we make the thing recyclable, you can put it in your bin, it will be recycled afterwards, you know, paper collections. So there's no problem with that, it's recyclable. I think, you know, there are people who will not use the internet, even people who use the internet not necessarily are going to have their favourite site as Ausman Street Town Council. There's a world out there of other things happening, and they don't necessarily know it's the town council that does the things that they might be interested in. So it'd be a chance for them to see exactly, and then a chance for them to know how they can get involved, turn up at a meeting, as two people did tonight, and say, look, this is what really concerns me, and that's the beauty of the town council. You can come to the town council and say, this is what's really bothering me, and something can be done about it, as we have shown tonight. But we only get to tonight by people know what the town council is there to do. So I'd fully support this.
Thank you councillor. I've got councillor Stackhouse, just, councillor Davis, but then I would like to move to the vote after, after these two.
Just reiterate, reiterate the other points there, even though she had the Bloom Festival on the weekend when I was at work, there were still loads of people who just didn't know what was going on. So, you know, and that's a massive thing for us and people to not know what's going on our own town. Like, it's really important to get information out that's not just on the website or on random flyers that I don't look at, and I know a lot of people my age don't look at the notice boards. So to get that in the post, you know, sends the information a bit better.
Thank you. New councillor Davis?
Yeah, I just think we, we've got to be careful with, with dates, it's good to have an overhaul, but, you know, dates do change. If you say it's on X date in the middle of the summer, the weekend changes and then we get sued because, you know, ten families have come over for the Bloom Festival and it's not happening. I, I just, you just, we've just got to be wary of it, because, believe me, I've been in place and we've caught up before now with that.
Councillor Moore, if, if, if your point is something that hasn't been raised, then I'll, I'll allow you in.
Thank you. I think that the, one of, one of the benefits of this as well is that it's apolitical, that it's coming from the council. As councillor Kerr mentioned, not everybody goes to Ausman Street Town Council's website, they'll go to, there's a plethora of sites out on Facebook, a lot of them are filled with misinformation, poor information, people chiming in with all sorts of random numbers and all sorts, so, you know, we've, we've all spent our time on Facebook having to go around correcting people to try and, you know, get the correct message out there. So getting away from this is a green thing, this is a blue thing, a red thing, it's like, no, this is a town council thing, this is what's happening in Ausman Street, and it's just very straight down the middle, without any influence coming from either side, I think is incredibly beneficial. If, if that helps people make educated decisions on where it is they'd like to vote, then great, but that's not what it's about. It's about just putting it straight down the middle of what is happening, and that's it. No, no party information needed at all.
Right, well, thank you very much, everyone. I'll just move to the vote then. On the motion, all in favour? Eight, four. Yeah, please.
Please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, oh.
Nine. Any against? Three, three against, any abstentions? One abstention. Okay, thank you, that one is carried. Next item, to answer any questions, sorry, lost them, I've lost the item number, it's item six. To answer any questions in accordance with standing orders upon which formal notice has been given. Aaron. Item seven, sorry councillor Jones.
We did used to have correspondence on them, on the agenda years ago, didn't we? Is that something we don't have to do anymore, or is that, not that it bothers me particularly, but I just thought.
It's very little used, and sometimes, you know, I think members of the public come and ask their question expecting an answer here and now, which often can't, can't be done. And so, again, it's one of those things that we could perhaps publicise a little bit better, that if you submit a question in writing, then you'll get an answer at the next meeting. But, okay, I'll, I'll move swiftly on to item seven, subcommittees and working groups. We have future Ausman Street Group meeting notes from, sorry, minutes, appendix D and appendix E meetings held on the eighteenth of May and the eighth of June of this year. Good to hear that, really good. Sorry, almost lost the laptop there. Councillor Jones. Can I move, we note those on block? On block, good idea. Seconded by councillor Maguire, all in favour? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item eight, finance officers' reports. Councillor Upton? Move, we note. So, yes, there we go, there's been a, a lot of work gone into this really, to try and find an alternative venue. That's a good point, that it, it wouldn't necessarily be, you know, permanent if, if, if Brugnton could come back into use, but this is, this is where we are now in order to have an event this year involving fireworks. So I'll open it up to the floor. Anyone wish to speak? Councillor Davis?
Yeah, I must share, and I think Aaron's in a very difficult position, because some people love it and some people hate it with the noise, the flashing and the parking around the streets close to the centre of town, so good luck, Aaron. I just want to thank officers for all the work that they put into this, it's not been an easy task, I can imagine. On regards to the parking, we have had a lot of issues over the time of the Bloom Festival with people parking on side streets. One thing I would like to say is, after the last Bloom Festival, we did put the, I helped Aaron and Henry put the bollards out in the streets, and that did stop a lot of people from parking on W L lines, on pavements and blocking driveways and such like. It was beneficial and made a little bit of extra work, made the residents in the local area a little bit more accessible and, and exiting their areas. So, and people on pav, pavements could walk on the pavement, so perhaps with a little bit of work, we could do that again. I hope that this doesn't have a, an effect on other plans that we might have, because the other thing I was, I think we should look at then, is if we, we do, I mean, it's not on the fireworks, this is on other events that we have in Ausman Street. We've been, we've lost, we've, we've hit a hurdle for two years now on this, and I wouldn't like to see another hurdle, but we have the fair in Ausman Street that's in a tight knit commu, area where Vargos Car Park, and that only has one exit. So I just think we need to look at that in the future as well, maybe, unless you know something I don't, Aaron, obviously. But I just, we've been hit hard on this and residents are upset about it. I wouldn't want to see anything else affected later on down the line, but well done to all officers on everything they have done.
Thank you. I'm going to, I think, you know, we've got a series of things to decide, I'm going to kick it off, I think, by proposing from the chair that we, that we do hold this event in Kiglass Park. That's the first thing to decide whether or not we do it, then, then we can go into the details. So is there a second for that? Councillor Maguire, all in favour? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? One abstention. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Any abstentions? One, two, three. Thank you. Do apologise. Going blind. Okay, so now, now we can talk about the detail. Councillor Jones, I'll bring you in now.
Yeah, it, it just concerns me obviously how big, you know, it's just fireworks, isn't it? So how, you know, the, I mean, I think from memory it was about twenty minutes the fireworks went off last time, you know, is, is that going to be a big enough event to attract people? You know, it was a bonfire and fireworks before, which, you know, bonfire, it is bonfire, I have to say at the end of the day. I mean, I'm, I'm fairly easy on this, I'm not, I'm not saying near or not, near, but I don't know whether it will attract enough people, and then I do worry about the fireworks coming down and where they're going to land. I mean, I know I have fireworks on my property and, and they do land on the, around the place. With Brugnton, there was, you know, there, there's a big field at the back that they can land on, I mean, God forbid we set someone's house on fire. You know, we're right in the middle of town here, so I, I presume you'd try to extinguish that avenue, but I don't know, I'm easy.
Councillor Upton, I've, I've been missing you.
Thank you, Mr Deputy. This was more a curiosity than anything, I was just going to ask that, given the high volume of public that would be attending, given that it's, it's an event that takes place at a time where we are blessed with other insalubrious weather, and given that the green within the park, presumably that's where it would be taking place, would, is situated right over the old black ditch, what's the likelihood of being, of our town green being left a sort of temporary mud patch? I mean, I know the same could be said for the condition of Brugnton, but given that the ta, that given that Kiglass is such a focal point in our town that wins awards for its beauty, it's, I just, whether, whether that had been factored into when, when doing the risks as well.
It, it's a good point. Or, or do you want to answer sort of several? Or?
No, do it, otherwise we'll be less.
Okay, no worries. So, yeah, it's a, just on that, it's, it's a good point, but I think, you know, we have, we've had poor weather on other events, stuff, you know, the park does, does do quite, quite well, doesn't it, just recover, certainly something worth, worth bearing in mind. I think on the, back to the, the question of the fireworks, I personally think that, so I've done a little bit of looking, and there's a, a company in the UK called Sky Magic. So Sky Magic are one of the leading companies worldwide, from here to Singapore, to the States, all over, they do these incredible drone shows. I don't know if people have seen them and what they can do, but I, I highly encourage you to go to magic show, magic, was it, skymagic.show and just look at their, their reel there, it is incredible. It looks like something out of Harry Potter or something, it is just, it looks truly magical. And I think that what the budget is for those kind of things, we would have to make contact and all, and all those kind of things, regardless, I mean, it costs an awful lot of money to, you know, fire rockets up and blow them up in the sky as well, you know, those shows are not cheap to do, as we know. This is something that I think would be truly unique to the town, something that would be incredibly special for the town, something that's sensitive to the neighbouring areas around the park, and something we should seriously consider. So, yeah, to the point, I would put a, a motion that we ask the, the clerk to come back to us at the nearest point possible with some quotes on how we would go about doing these drone shows, because as amazing as our fireworks displays have been over the years, and they have been absolutely phenomenal, you can you can go pretty much anywhere in the country and see a fireworks show. If you want to come see one of the world's leading drone shows, you go to Oster Street. That's something that we could really get behind.
Right, okay. Yes, because I, yeah, I was going to make a point about the fireworks that, you know, obviously people have missed this, this event. It was incredibly popular for many years, but by far the biggest complaint is obviously about the noise of the fireworks. Now, drone shows are absolutely stunning. But for this year, I mean, how feasible would that be? I don't know. So that's another one, I don't know, to, to, to get the clerk's opinion on. Yeah, sorry, councillor Kerr.
Now, I'm fully up and boarded a drone show. I think it might be a bit late. I don't know. Let's explore it this year, but they may be put out this year, but let's look for the future. Because I think we need to move towards silent firework, quieter fireworks, shall I say. You proposed this last year, didn't you, Rose? We had a debate around it. But I think in that location, there's going to be problems if you have very loud bangs. Because a lot of people live in the middle of the town centre, aren't they? And it's been unkind to them and it's difficult for pets as well. And for some people who are, yeah, who find loud noises troubling. Then I was going to mention is we've got an opportunity, it seems to me, in the park to make like, almost like an enchanted park for a week or two, isn't it, with lighting? Basically, it's coloured lighting under the trees, isn't it? And there are various places around the country where particularly in the run up to Christmas, people go for a walk through an enchanted forest. And what it is, is just the trees are already there, but just underlit with brightly coloured lights. Anybody who's been to a festival will know that it's very often that festivals have a similar sort of bearing. It's quite amazing the effect you can create for not a lot of money. And it's all, you know, it can be taken down. So I wonder whether we could explore that as part of it and touch, to your point, try to make the event more than just 20 minutes of lasers or drones or whatever fireworks we're going to, to have.
Stimulating plenty of debate. Councillor Maguire?
I think both councillor Moore and councillor Kerr's ideas are both brilliant ideas. I mean, last year when we had this very similar debate around this very table about whether we should or shouldn't have loud fireworks, I did suggest then, and I was laughed at, having some sort of laser show or something theatrical like we've just said. So we're on this, we're all on the same page as what I was 12 months ago. I did say 12 months ago, and I'll say it again, that I do think that we have fireworks in the town to bring people into town instead of having them spread around villages where you're going to have more noises in more villages and streets and upsetting more dogs, more owners. It's more confined, it's more in one space. At the moment, we, well, prior to this, we had our fireworks at Brugnton. Oster Street School has their fireworks, Oster Street School, both in very similar locations to the park. Not much, you know, within a stone's throw of each other, isn't it, to the park? So when it comes to the loud bangs and so on and so forth, residents there are already quite used to that. I'm not saying they should accept it, that's not what I'm saying. But when, if you're going to have it in Oster Street School, you would have had it in Brugnton, you're going to have it in the park, it's still going to go on at Oster Street School. So, you know, all you, all I'm concerned of is the safety issues because more and more people tend to have these loud fireworks that they love to watch and see and hear in their back gardens where you've got safety issues and more issues to more residents because there's more going on.
Yeah, yeah, that's an important consideration for sure. Aaron, could you come in now on this issue of, at this point in time, drones? What was it? Enchanted forests, et cetera.
For you, that's why, that's why you get.
Thank you for that advice. And we do only have one more meeting after now before Bonfire Night. So councillor Davis?
Yeah, for this year, I would propose that we, with the fireworks in the park, that Aaron get on and do that because time is very short. But I like the councillor Moore and councillor Kerr's suggestions. And I would propose that maybe in January, we have a meeting just to discuss next year's events. And one being, you know, Halloween is just a few days before the fireworks. Park could be done with some good lights, we could all go there and join in with the fun, dress up maybe or not. But you could make an event of it. So you've got the Halloween leading up to some fireworks. And, you know, we had some laser lights, they're absolutely fantastic, I've seen them, or with the drones, get some lights in the trees. But I think for this year, we haven't got cracking ideas, but I don't even got time and I don't think it's fair to put that workload on the clerk and his staff. I think we should go with what we're doing. People will like it somewhat, usual thing. Majority will, it'd be good for the children because they love fireworks. And then maybe have a group or a full council, just one evening, where we just discuss in advance. And then we'd be in time for setting the budget as well. So we could maybe get some numbers around it and allocate some money to it properly for the following year.
Yeah, I think between us, we've, we've come up with some cracking ideas tonight. So councillor Jones?
A couple of things, I see on the bottom, it says to decide what proportion of ticket sales are available to the charity. I wasn't sure that we could sell tickets as such. It's a, we're on a donation basis again. I thought it was all free if they came in Kiglass. And you took somewhere, I read it before, to limit it to about 4,000 people, was it? So that means we, if there's 4,000, we've got to get a couple of quid off each of them to make it viable, haven't we?
Yep, Aaron?
Does recover, we do manage to do other events, but, you know, you might have to, after doing it long. In terms of charging to go into Kiglass Park, it's, I think it's a fair comment, but the park is closed normally at that time. So I think you'd be paying to see, I'll pitch David in a second. So you'd be paying to see the fireworks. So I think that'd be the way that we get around that. We could be challenged, absolutely, could be challenged on that. I think that's on the basis that when moving forward, really that's an issue for the charity, Kiglass charity as opposed to the council. Yeah, you, you know, all of this is open to challenges and it's not without risk.
Councillor Kerr, Austin?
I'm concerned about the concept of paying, not because I'm concerned about the concept of paying, but I just think people will stand at the gates and stand around and not pay. And that will lead to congestion on the roads all the way around because you'll probably see more from there because you'll be back further to see the fireworks above you. So I was, so presumably we're going to have some concessions that we're going to be saying income from. Yeah, yeah. So are you going to sell refreshment concessions and other concessions? And presumably a budget on those, but I'm not, I'm quite prepared for us to put, I don't know, five or 10,000 pounds in to make this event. Well, I don't think anybody wants to do a half heart at a mean event, which doesn't really meet anybody's expectations. And for the sake of that, I'd rather have a budget of five or 10,000 that we spend on this event. And it's because the first time we've done it and we need to get it right. Hopefully future events, we may be able to spend less, but I do think we need a budget for this event. I think it's a bit silly to go into the event expecting to fund itself because you may find the concession disappear because the weather's inclement. And nobody actually wants to come and you'll then be faced with a loss and reporting that back to us, Aaron, because I don't know how you safeguard yourself in that situation that you'll have to pay for displays. But there's no guarantee that people will actually even come if the weather's inclement. So I think realistically, we should have set a budget for this. I don't know what, we didn't know what we were doing, do we, this time last year? And the Brugnton offer is quite different, isn't it? And I would suggest a budget of 10K then perhaps. We have to say that from reserve, don't we, in order to, unless you couldn't, I don't know where we are in terms of the review of the budget. It's the same as elsewhere.
Okay, we'll just cover that point.
But, you know, spend this money for this event, members are minded to do what you just.
You know, as the tradition has been for this event. Come to challenge. Well, suppose again that donations would go to challenge.
Right, well, hold on. Yeah, one. Councillor Davis proposed that the event goes ahead as detailed in the report. And include, yeah, include, it's councillor Davis did include, hang on, hang on, hang on, I don't quite know how to handle this. So, yeah, councillor Moore, you're quite right. You proposed investigating the drones a while ago. Yes, could you please help clear this up?
So I think to councillor Davis's point, he makes a valid point as far as timeframe. So although I did say investigate this, I mean, as far as booking a drone show, it might be as fairly simple as it is getting the fireworks in. It might be a simple case of making a phone call, are you available on this date? Yes, no, done. We don't know. So I think that as far as, if we, as far as the drone show slash light show, maybe if you could, the councillor Kerr suggested, make some inquiries. If that seems like it's going to be feasible to pull together in a similar sort of timeframe as what it would be to do the fireworks, then we can go down that route. And if not, then we abandon that until next year. And as councillor Davis rightly said, to get together early in the year and have a look at maybe expanding out into that and revert back to the fireworks so that we've at least got something. I think every councillor in here shares the disappointment that the officers do with the difficulty around Brugnton. But it's a safety issue that we're, we're not allowed to make a decision on, so our hands are tied. So this way, there's still an event with the possibility of it going out into a drone show or something like that, if that's feasible by officers, otherwise revisit. Maybe we could go in on that together as a joint motion. Councillor Davis, if you'd be happy, and then that helps clear it up for the chair. So if there's a second, if you'd be seconding us, so yeah, so you've got a second for that. So send that round and if not, then.
Well, I'd initially read those as, I'd sort of heard those as separate. That you were proposing that we look at drones for this event and that councillor Davis was proposing that we didn't, given the time constraints. Well, if you're happy to, yeah, if you're happy to second councillor Moore's proposal, then that's what's on the table. So does anyone else wish to speak or can I just go all in favour?
Just, just to come up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll sum up.
All right, I was going to do budget separately, but.
Sorry, just to clarify what I was saying, if you'd ask for donations, what we could then do is to use that money as we do for our grants and donations budget. So we'd reinvent that money and that would be available to the council to dispense to local communities as we do for our grants budget. Basically, it would increase that provision. That saves us from having to tie up with one organisation, which we do a lot of. But I think, I don't, you know, as, to demonstrate.
I want to, I want to consider that question of, of, of charging and donations separately. Because it's just getting a little bit complicated for, for me.
Yeah. To, to charity, Oster Street Borderland, Oster Street Borderland Rotary then took it forward. Technically, it is their event and they're, we've worked with them all the way through. To then change that at this stage would be very, very difficult and it is, but we work in partnership. They put up a lot of resource, they man, they person the gates. Now, if you want to change that in future, yeah, no, sorry, I should have given you that over, I should have given that overview as well. So if you want to change that in the future, yeah, great, good.
Okay, where was I? Were we, did we vote on, no, so on, on the proposal? Proposed by councillor Moore, seconded by councillor Davis.
I need clarity on this.
Yeah.
So I'm going to go bit by bit, okay? So you're asking us to make inquiries about a drone show and if that's okay, that's the way you'd like to go. Now, I need to put a, I need to put a caveat on there because we've never delivered a drone show. I'd need to bring that back to.
Like, yeah, there may be some issues around drones in built up areas.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Right, okay. Sorry. People aren't quite going through the chair at this stage. It's.
I always think it's with, exactly as it is, it's just has an extra layer, doesn't it?
So, yeah, it just leaves without certainty that we go into the meeting in October, potentially with a report and, and, you know, all, all different things to think about. But that's, that's all I'm worried about, that we're like eight weeks away. Anyway, councillor Jones?
Yeah, I propose we just go back to the fireworks, I make it simple and then next year we'll expand on it. I think, I think we're getting a bit too late. You know, the press, when we asked our advertising fireworks show in Oster Street. And I think we want to do that, otherwise a month away, we're going to be in stoke. So let's, let's just try and do things simple first and then do fancy things perhaps next time.
Well, well, okay, but the, the councillor Moore's proposal is, is, is first, I'm afraid. Can I, can I move to the vote? Can I, can I move to the vote?
Okay. I think I can see, we can also see where this is going. Councillor Jones makes a sensible point. So I think with councillor Davis's permission, we'll withdraw the motion for now and re-table that maybe together for next year. And with councillor Jones's permission, I'll second his instead. And we just stick with the fireworks and move towards a drone show. Essentially next year. If everyone's happy with that, then it simplifies.
Great, that's where I was trying to get to. But, yeah. The event as detailed in the, in the report, basically. All in favour? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Okay, now, but the question of silent fireworks is slightly separate, so. Keep this simple, we, because we debated it last year, we've debated it tonight. With consideration about the change of location. I propose that we, for this year, we go with a low volume firework display. Do I have a second? Thank you. Councillor Stackhouse. All in favour? Any against? Five, oh, hang on, so. Better count all in favour, all in favour.
One, two, your count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
All against. Two, three, four, five, five against. No abstentions, I don't think, because that was a. Six. One, two, three, four. Five. Yeah. Okay. So. For this year's event. Low volume fireworks. Now we come to the question of costs. And to what extent we may want to underwrite the event, because it. If I can bring the clerk in, just to explain that it would be a more expensive event. I think the report indicates.
Nothing's working now. This time of night, including, including the clerk. So. Councillor Kerr raised a question, budget of ten thousand pounds. We believe putting a good event on would be roughly that amount of money. We'd normally offset that to a certain degree with the, with the money collected. And that, you know, that's what we've done traditionally in the past. You've got, you know. We'll deliver as good a, good a event as we possibly, possibly can. You might just want to lock up the option that we'll underwrite it to ten thousand pounds. All donations. However, if costs go above ten thousand pounds. You know, donations will be made to offset that cost. So it's not just all going to charity. You know, you will be attracting, you know, up to about eight, nine, ten thousand pounds for charity for this event. And that would be distributed in consultation with town clerk, town council and Ossistry Borderland Rotary.
Councillor Maguire.
Would be, be able to recoup some of the, some of the costs back to help towards what we usually do, if you like. With the food stalls being within the park, with a bar being within the park, like we do at the balloon festival. Sales of goods within the park, like they do at the balloon festival, you know, lights and so on and so forth. Obviously, they would have to pay to be able to have a pitch on the park. I don't know if it's feasible, but it's some way of recouping some of the costs that we wouldn't normally be able to recoup, if you like, because it's not our event, it's not our field. It's just another thought to make this more possible.
That, that is, that, that is written in as part of the, part of this proposal that we've just agreed to do. So there will be some income from the concession stalls and things. But it's this question, because for the last few years, we've recouped the cost of the event from the gate receipts slash donations, haven't we?
And certainly that would have been the proposal for last year. Obviously, last year didn't go. So it's within your gift to set the policy you want.
But here we're talking about setting a budget for the event. And then all receipts, all proceeds from donations and ticket sales. However, word in that would, would be distributed to charity.
That, that, and that was, that was, you know, that was suggested by council.
Right.
So we're obviously happy to work with whatever you want to do.
Okay. Anyone wish to, councillor Coburn?
I think if we are funding this event a little bit blind. I think capping our budget at ten thousand. And then if it proves to be a more expensive or more lucrative event than we're anticipating. We're still doing an event for charity, we're still raising money for charity, but we're limiting the potential obligations to the council. That seems reasonable to me.
Okay, councillor Cassidy.
The Rotary will obviously end, probably end up with less. But it makes sense to set a budget. They can go around with buckets and do other fundraising stalls in the park as well, though it makes sense to set a budget so we know where we are.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? So councillor Kerr, what was your proposal?
Was I establish a budget of ten thousand? I mean, it is just a budget, we realise it's a, an event we haven't run before, but it is a budget, so it's something to work with. And that we don't charge entry to the park, I just think it's not practical to do so, rather than create problem with the legality of it, I just don't think it's a practical option. But we do encourage donations and recollections. And I didn't realise the treble niners were involved with this event as they have been in the past. So I'm more than happy for them to receive the money in the usual way they have done in the past. And we have that event where we distribute that, so that's absolutely fine. And my initial comments were all in the light that that wasn't happening. So I think that was it. I don't think there's anything more to say. Presume you'll need to control numbers. Alan, and there may come a time where we have to turn people away because of numbers, but that will have to be part of the cost of running the event.
And councillor Coburn, did you second councillor Kerr? Before, you, you spoke in support. Thank you. All in favour?
So.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. So it is, it is therefore a free event.
Yeah.
So you're promoting a free event. Encouraging donations with all of the nations going to charity. And you're not asking for any of your costs to be covered. However, it would be useful if, obviously, if the Rotary wants to. You know, to, you need to give me a little bit of flexibility there. That does. They have to be on the gate because they manage those gates and other.
So, so. Councillor Moore.
Thank you. I, I do like trying to keep the events free. I think it's great to be promoting the free events around the pub. I don't think that we should feel feel terrible about trying to bring a little bit of income back into the council, especially if that income is then ring fenced towards the next event. Doesn't necessarily need to go towards other things. But these events are obviously quite time consuming, quite expensive. I don't know whether, and I'm not saying necessarily that, that I'm feeling one way or the other, it's just that I, I feel like a discussion around whether or not the council should retain a certain amount towards the next year's event. It may be something that we should consider in there. You know, a small percentage perhaps, or something that, again, it's still just goes straight back into the town, doesn't it? I love the idea of just giving it all to charity, but if we need to find again another ten thousand next year and another ten thousand the year after, it seems like we could perhaps be a little a little less generous with all of it. Councillor Kerr for, for thought on such as his point.
Well, yes, I am happy, yes.
It's just a practicality, this is a firework event, so you can see it, you haven't got to be in the park to see it. So other events you can do in the park where you need to be in the park to take part, absolutely fine. I've no difficulty with charging. I just don't think it will work with a firework event because you're, I know that causes congestion in the streets around. And the worst nightmare is there's very few people in the park, loads of people all bundled around, bound as to can't get around because Welsh balls and all the rest of roads are all so clogged with people. But yeah, and the other thing is, I think if you ask people to make donations, you can't really say make donation, ten percent of the money you donate is going back to the town council and it would be ring fenced abuse for this, it's too complicated.
We can, and, and we can review this after this event. We can always review and, and change what happens in future. So. We have that proposal from councillor Kerr. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Oh, so. That's carried, thank you very much. So that decides that last point as well, doesn't it? So officers, are you happy now that you have? Yeah, it's always very difficult to change traditional things, isn't it? And, but this is a genuine attempt to put on a, another good event for, for the town, isn't it? So hopefully. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be received in, in that spirit and. Yeah. Okay, thank you councillors, difficult one to, to get through that. Next is the October Fun Fair. The, what's become a nice tradition again, the Stokes Fair. Asking to use the Smithfield Street Car Park. As per usual, really, so any councillor Davis.
I propose we go ahead with this, all the necessary checks are done by the clerk and the staff, it's good for the children. Twenty third popular day, so I suppose we go with it.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, thank, I'll go with councillor Price on this one, thank you. Yeah, no, I think we've ironed out the wrinkles on this one, haven't we? Did a bit of work last year, so all in favour? That one's unanimous, thank you very much. Nine C is the Howis Hall Exterior, the branding, painting and mural. We have a nice report from Mr Clough, so I'll just hand over to him just to go through any points he wishes to.
Yeah, so this is just the noting. We had the report. We had the report done, commissioned. You were involved in it. Here's the outcome. It's clearly linked to the plan that we put in front of you. I have to report it just for the purposes of that said, yeah, just to note.
Thank you. All in favour? Very much. Fourteen is policies. There's been a review of policies, so I'll let the clerk be on this again.
Yeah, so just discussion about policies this evening about the sale of live animals as prizes. We are reviewing all our market policies. We've done a bit with you and it'll be a continuous process. We certainly need to improve our third party events policy and develop our investment strategy. But we think most stuff's covered. Is there any, are there any other areas that you want to think about? And I'm thinking particularly with the way that we've gone with planning, whether you want to then set some or consider the need to set some policies around planning to support you. So the comments I go, why have I got to come in and talk about trees? Well, it's because we haven't got a policy. If you have a policy that we have, we say this about trees, I can cover it off under delegated powers, can't I? But until we do so, I can't. So it's just to ask if you want to think about any areas like that.
Okay. Sorry councillor, I've got councillor Kerr first.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have one on planning. We normally ask for one tree to replace one tree. Just stand, I know we're only consultees, but rather than us having to time a member every time an application comes in to ask for one tree or when it's a building that could have solar panels, I think we should be asking for solar panels. So we just write a few things down to say, these are the policies of the council. Then we haven't got to worry about it because automatically Aaron will put those on appropriate applications because it's the policy of our council to seek those things. Obviously, I'll work out what those are and then come back to us or presumably the planning committee to approve. But I just think it'd be useful to have that. Somebody said to me, why hasn't the new McDonald's, for instance, got solar panels on it? And I have to say, I didn't raise it. Nobody raised it here. And it's just, okay, in the heat of the moment, maybe I didn't think about it. But it's just, you know, it's not the best way of behaving, is it? And if it was tea, so it would be useful to have a few core policies, not many of them. And then we just say as consultees, these are our policies.
About drones?
Let's put it as a, we have got policy around drones. I don't really want to change that until a point where we want to change it. Just because it encourages members of the public to have drones in the park, which I don't really want.
In terms of planning policies, we could, we could talk about those in a planning meeting, couldn't we?
There's a couple of ways to do it. You could do it in a planning meeting, have it on the agenda there. Probably not for the next one, but the one after, or you can set up a little working group of interested members. And we can, you know, we can spend a couple of hours going through it and doing it that way.
What do members think? Agenda item on a planning committee? Meeting? Yeah, all in favour?
So just for clarity, that will be November's. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, is that that item covered off, Aaron? Item fifteen, the upgrade to the traffic signals at the Leg Street Cross Street junction. They're wanting to put up no right turn signs when they do the upgrade. And the other thing that affects us is that they're going to replace the bollards at the mouth of Cross Street, which we have been under contract to put out bollards and take them back in again as and when. So town clerk, would we be losing that contract effectively?
So it's a semi, it's not contracted such as a semi formal arrangements. I think Shropshire would say there's no contract in place. I think, I think it's clear the current setup needs improving, just kicking a bollard isn't over, isn't acceptable, especially as we know the risks caused by vehicles. So whilst, yeah, whilst it will have an impact on us financially, there's, you know, it's very difficult to argue either way, either financially or or, you know, an investment point of view. So that would be my view. However, you're going to have to think about as part of the budget because it does kick a hole in your budget.
Okay, so it's got budget implications, but it has to be said, it would, it would really improve the street scene there. Not having those road cones out basically every day, wouldn't it? So does anyone have anything to say other than noting? Thank you. All in favour? That's great. Thank you very much. So now I propose. What do I do on this one?
So it's a resolution. So you have to, you have to.
I propose to exclude the public and press. Thank you. That's all I need to say really, isn't it?
Yeah.
All in favour? Thank you.
So, so just for the record, I'm now not recording the meeting.
Okay, and thank you to everyone in the audience. I did not forget your name.